Been close to over a year or so since we've been in here. And I can't thank you guys enough for having the patience. It's, you know, me being president, this is my first time here. So I'm gonna do my best with Dirk over here looking at me. You know what I mean? I've got a lot, I've got a lot to stand up to. And I appreciate it Dirk, you know, with all the mentoring you've done for me throughout the years and stuff, and helping me and stuff. So I appreciate it. So take a couple notes. I might screw up a little bit. I might screw up a little bit. But I'm gonna do my best tonight to try to respect everybody's thoughts. And, you know, it's gonna be a great night for a lot of reasons, okay? So let's look at the good things. We're gonna listen to you. But I will ask to try to be as most respectful to council and staff, if you don't mind. I really would appreciate that. And we're going to have a lot going on tonight. So we're gonna have a public hearing, and then we're gonna have, you know, public comments. So bear with us. We might have a break or two, something like that. But at the, at the end of the day, we're gonna leave here tonight very positive, and everybody is gonna get the opportunity to say what they need and say what they, their passion is. And we're gonna allow that. So that's what we're here for. So being that said, unfortunately, this afternoon, that we had a gentleman that is a huge, huge pillar of the community that has passed away. His name is Gary Jones, okay? Jerry Jones is a personal friend of mine who worked with the fire department together. He probably saved thousands of lives and started a lot of the cardiac, cardiac, help me out Clay.
So yeah, Gary Jones was one of the early members of Talbot County Advanced Life Support, one of the original members. And he pretty much single-handedly built the cardiac program at the hospital here in Easton. And it's just revered locally, statewide, and even on a national level, well-known. And it's so unfortunate, but yes.
Yes, it's very unfortunate. So I would like for everybody to stand, please. And for his family and everybody that knows him, I wanna, I wanna do a moment of silence for Gary because he's so well-respected and we're really, really gonna miss him. And we're gonna do this, and then we're gonna follow that by Mr. Vice President Lesher. We're gonna follow that by prayer.
God, our provider, help us. It is sometimes hard to believe there is enough to share. We question your ways when they differ from the ways of the world in which we live. We turn to our own understanding rather than trusting in you. We take offense at your teachings and your ways, at turning the other cheek, at loving our neighbors as ourselves, at lifting up the meek and the poor. Turn us again to you. And now turn our minds to the work of this council, knowing that when we act with justice and compassion, we are your hands in this world. In your most holy name we pray. Amen.
Followed by a pledge of allegiance to the high of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Thank you, everybody. I appreciate that moment. And I'm sure Gary's family appreciate that too. Okay, tonight we have an agenda before us. And I want to welcome everybody. And Mr. Pack was unable to be with us this evening. So council has an agenda of June 8th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to amend the agenda to include a letter of support for a request from the Shields family for a grant at, for the Bellevue Passage Museum, probably under county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Aye, so move.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Secretary.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo.
Aye.
Mr. Lesher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Thank you, council. As far as the minutes are concerned, council has a, has had a chance to review the minutes of May 18th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Disbursements for June 1st and June 8th. Councils had a chance to review the disbursements of the 1st and 8th of June. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the disbursements? Hearing none, the chair moves that the disbursements be accepted as unanimous consent. Here's one of my favorite parts of the agenda, okay? We are so glad that we're very blessed to have Joy Nagel as our new finance director. Joyce, could you come on up, please?
I think you're, you want both of them to go up, or?
Just one at a time.
Oh, one at a time, yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind. So Joyce, Joyce, as everybody knew, Angela is leaving us after 25 years. And Joyce has interviewed and jumped in Angela's position. And we're so blessed to have her. So I don't wanna really put you on the spot. I did come and see you the other day.
You did.
You weren't there, you were working. So, but anyway, I can't thank you enough for taking the position. And it's, it's hard shoes to fill, and I think we've got the person that can do that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes. So I'll give you just a couple minutes to introduce yourself and anything you'd like to say.
Okay, so my name is Joy Nagel, and I began working with you as finance director on June 1st. I'm really excited about being here, and I'm working with an excellent group of Talbot County colleagues. Looking, looking much, very forward to serving the community.
Right.
Just, you know, a little bit about myself. I have a bachelor's degree in accounting, an MBA, as well as I am a certified public accounting. I have deep accountant, I have deep experience in financial and, financial and business management, working for large public companies, as well as in nonprofit and government sectors. I, I'm, most of my experience was, has been, most of my career spent in New Jersey. I am now a Talbot County resident since October. And again, really looking forward to being a part of this organization and happy to be here.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Counsel?
I just wanna add my words of welcome to Joy. We're so delighted to have you with us and really look forward to working with you. We, as you know, from the budgeting process, we, we will get a chance to work very closely with you.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. DeVilleo?
I just echo the same words. Very excited to have you onboard. It was great interviewing, meeting with you.
Thank you.
It wasn't as much an interview as much as just meeting you. So you want us right over, and we're excited to work with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, you know, and budgeting is one of my favorite topics. I really love numbers.
Great.
And Angela will probably give you a fair warning about how closely you will work with me. But I'm excited very much to, to have you here. It was quite a process to go through, and I'm absolutely overjoyed. I truly believe that we have found the right person for this, for this position. So welcome, Joy.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, well, welcome. And just like council said, we're blessed to have you, and we welcome you, and we look forward for many years of good things, working together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, yes, thank you, Mr. Council President. This proud moment.
Yes.
Sometimes the stars align.
Yes.
And I have to say, we're a little anxious with the thought of Angela leaving us. As happy as we are for her, those are big shoes to fill. And so, Joy, we are glad you're here. And I know you're drinking out of a fire hose right now.
Yes.
But I know we have the right person on our senior leadership team. And it's gonna be an honor for me to work with you, as well as our colleagues, serving the council and the community. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next up, we have David Edwards. David's our new HR. Once again, we've hit a home run, and we're really blessed to have David too.
Thank you.
So I really appreciate the interview. I really appreciate you structuring your life around coming to Talbot County. And, you know, once again, we were in a position where, you know, everything was fine, and people tend to move on. So we really appreciate your willingness to, you know, help us in Talbot County. We need somebody. We've worked together a little bit already. I was very impressed with your detail and the way you're handling things so far. I think, I think we're gonna be, we, once again, I think we've been blessed to have somebody like you. So the public needs to understand, so when we, after, before the first of the year, we had several huge positions to fill, and Joy and you were one of them. And I'm very proud of this council making these very, very important decisions on running this county. So I'm gonna give you a few minutes, David, to explain who you are, what you represent, and a little bit about yourself, so the public can understand not only who you are, but what type of individuals and employees that we're hiring as accountant. Because we're hiring top-notch people, and we're, because we're surrounding ourselves with a phenomenal team. So I'll leave it up to you for a minute.
Well, thank you, thank you so much for that, Chuck. Good afternoon, I'm David Edwards, the new Director of Human Resources for the county. A little bit about me, I relocated to the area about three months ago from Long Island, New York, where I was the Global Vice President of People for a large manufacturing company there. And was really on the corporate side for many years with companies like GE and Samsung and LG, et cetera. And really made a decision to come to a community and be part of a community. It's really something I'd been thinking about for quite a long time, and had visited here and have friends here. And it was a no-brainer for me that this would be the area that I would come to. So here I am, this is day nine on the job, and I'm excited to have this opportunity to lead the administrative services function for the county. I want to particularly thank Clay and Jessica and the council. And I've been able to have almost all of my meet and greets with the department heads. And I have been honestly very impressed with the caliber of the leadership team. And it's really just energized me even more. So we, I, I agree with you that there's just great people all around. So thank everyone for such a warm and gracious welcome. I, I don't think I've ever experienced such a warm and gracious welcome in a company. It's fantastic.
Ms. Price?
Sure. And as we are doing other senior leadership positions, we got an opportunity to work with you on one of the other positions that we're hiring for. And I loved what you said, well, first it was day five, and every candidate that came through was like, pfft, day five. But you were able to put them in such a place of comfort with the process, since you had just gone through it with us just a few weeks ago. So it was nice to see you in action in that role so quickly. And we're thrilled very much to have you here. It's, it's always hard when there's turnover, especially, we've had several, you know, department heads recently, but I, I think we have knocked it out of the park. And I hope that the public agrees, as you meet our new leadership team over the course of 2021, how very special all these people are, including you, David. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have all the challenges here of a company with well over 100 employees, and, and the added wrinkle that we're a government to boot. So we appreciate having your great expertise on here to guide us through, and, and look forward to the, the opportunities that we're gonna have by having you as part of the team. Thank you.
Thank you.
So when I was told that I had interviewed for, an individual for Director of Human Resources, I didn't know what to ask. I just called that department, and I said, who do you want for your boss? And they, they said, well, we know what we're doing. We just need somebody who can, who knows all the laws. And when I looked through your resume and a few questions, it was instantly there that you had all the knowledge to, to keep them going. So I think it's gonna be a great fit, and I'm, I'm sure the county staff are really gonna enjoy working with you and appreciate having you there. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, counsel. So, welcome, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, for giving me a moment to just, again, say, the stars continue to align. You know, we talk about our strategic plan as, as your staff, being people, projects, and processes. And so really, you know, you heard what he said, he was the Vice President of People. You know, we recognize what drives our, much of our successes are our people. And to have somebody of David's caliber, we're excited. And I know we'll do great things to ensure that we have, you know, a great workforce, and that we're addressing the needs as we are supposed to and should.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So that was, not only is it exciting for us, keep in mind, exciting for the county, because these are top-notch people that we're looking and dealing with. So it's a benefit to you guys too. Okay, the next thing, we got, we got something extremely exciting. I'll see him, I'll see him over there. You know what I mean? So we've got the Department of Correction, and we've got the Employee of the Year, Vernon. And Terry, would you mind coming on up, please? So this is, this is something that, once again, very, very proud of that department. Vernon, we can't, we can't thank you enough for your dedication. How many years have you been here?
Four and a half.
Four and a half. So that, that shows you the commitment and dedication of, you know, you've been here for four years. So obviously, you've made an impression to your staff, your friends there, and Terry. So we congratulate you, and we want to give, give you a few minutes, because the spotlight's on you, and you deserve it, okay? You deserve it.
No pressure.
So we're gonna give you a few minutes to call.
Thank you. My name is Vernon Cephus. I was born and raised in Easton. I'm a corporal and on transportation unit. I've, I've been working here for not too long, but it's definitely been a journey. I've met some amazing people. And I know a lot of times, correction is always on the back burner. So it's nice to be here with the county council and all these people in the county to represent, like Mr. Colas and the actual department. So it's a pleasure to be here.
That's, that's great. So, so Mr. Boss, how's he doing? Obviously, he's going pretty good.
Corporal Cephus epitomizes the very best in corrections. Being transportation, he really transports inmates and picks up inmates in 23 counties in the state of Maryland. So everywhere he goes, he wears the Talbot County badge. So wherever he goes, he represents each and every one of us in the county. And it is a distinct pleasure to have Corporal Cephus. It is a distinct pleasure that he is our Employee of the Year, and well-deserves the award. Even-keeled, focused, empathetic, and a lifelong Easton resident. So he's a part of the community that he helps to protect. So we're very pleased to have him.
Yeah, we're pleased to have him too. Counsel, Mr. Vice President?
Well, it tells me everything that, that in four and a half years, you've, you've been promoted to corporal, and you've been named Employee of the Year. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And it's nice to see a hometown boy doing good.
Ms. DeVilleo?
I agree. It's always great when you see somebody from the community being able to stay here and having a career. And I greatly appreciate you stepping up into the, the career field that you chose. I'm, thank you, Director Kokolas, for recognizing him. And it is important that we bring folks in that are doing such a great job, and kind of put them in the spotlight for a minute, and so I appreciate you doing that. Corporal, thank you very much for, for all your hard work, a great year, and I hope to see you up here again.
Thank you.
Price?
Well, we talk about growing our own teachers, and now we've grown our own corrections officer. And to, being so immersed in the community really says a lot. The only negative I would say is, do you really wanna be Employee of the Year for 2020, a year we always wanna forget? But I'm sure that this is highlighted, you know, for you, a positive in, in that year. And we thank you very much for being here. And I, and I love what you said about, you know, transporting on all those counties, and having somebody like you representing Talbot County, and putting our good name across the rest of the jurisdictions is wonderful. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Vernon. I can't, once again, I think it's even, you know, even more special that, that you're from here, and you, you've dedicated, you know, yourself to the county, because that's, that's hard. Not, not many people are coming out of the school wanting a correctional job, that's for sure. And you're, you're a special guy, and we really appreciate that, and we will recognize that, and we should recognize that. So I'm, I'm very thankful that you're with us. And being that we said that, we have something for you that we do wanna recognize, so we want you to come on up here and take some pictures and enjoy the moment.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
I have a statement to read that Director Kokolas provided.
Okay, I'm sorry. Everybody can see. Everybody's out in their seat. It's a little modern statement.
2020 correctional Employee of the Year. We are very pleased to announce Corporal Vernon Cephus as the 2020 Employee of the Year for the Talbot County Department of Corrections. Corporal Cephus has been employed with the department since December 2016, and is presently assigned to the transportation unit. As such, he has completed all the specialized training that accompanies the safe and secure transport of high-risk inmates. Transportation officers always represent their home department when transporting inmates to other jurisdictions, and in the case of Corporal Cephus, we are certainly well-thought-of. He interacts so well with the courts and our law enforcement partners that they routinely request his presence when an issue requires resolution. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, he has remained steadfast, consistently showing up for work, and even though transport assignments were at an all-time low, he was always prepared to complete all duties assigned to him. His daily presence provided a positive influence on the environment shared by all staff, visitors to the facility, and the inmate population. He is always relied upon to professionally engage in any routine assignments or special projects necessary to ensure the overall safety of the facility. Corporal Cephus is quick to respond to emergency calls during the course of a routine day in any correctional facility. He never complains or backs away from an assignment. Rather, he presents a friendly and pleasant disposition, and his fellow officers enjoy working with him. Corporal Cephus enjoys many activities during his leisure time, but particularly enjoys the company of his many friends. He also has a passion for writing and uses his imagination, authoring works of fiction that he hopes to have published one day. He shares many traits with his twin brother Douglas, who is also employed as a correctional officer with this department. Talbot County is extremely fortunate to have such a sincere and dedicated officer on staff. Corporal Cephus always represents himself in a professional manner that not only speaks well of him, but also reflects in a positive light the staff of the Department of Corrections. Congratulations, Corporal Cephus.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Terry, do you wanna get, do you wanna get in the picture, Terry? Terry? Terry, you wanna go on the picture?
Yeah, that was, that was a special moment, that's for sure. You know, we need, we need more, we need more of those, that's for sure. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have our presentation of the FYI 20, or 2022 Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. Martin, you wanna come on up?
I'm on the way.
Okay. We wanna welcome you. You do an excellent job at this, Martin. So you wanna bring everybody up to speak, kind of where we're at?
Sure.
I appreciate it.
We're talking about the fiscal year 2022, opportunities for landowners to sell the development rights on their properties, so that they can continue to be farmed for a long time into the future. So the MOUTH program is in its 41st year. They've been doing this preservation work statewide through the acquisition of development rights to retain them and keep farming going. They receive state funding through the regular budget process, and we also retain some additional revenues as a certified county. We keep a larger proportion of the sales taxes that we receive for other land transfers and activities that go on there. So those are what make up the funds that we can turn around and offer to landowners in exchange for their development rights. The list that we're talking about is of the 12 top-ranked applications that have come in, in this round, that will be reviewed by the foundation over the next year, through the fall and winter, especially when they will do appraisals for farms that had not been appraised before, to establish a fair market value for the property, in addition to the information that comes from the application that they fill out about the farm qualities of the properties that they own. So I guess the process is that we are doing several years at once. We have applications that we're doing at this point, through the end of the fiscal year, for applications that we received last year. These are going for next year, and also we have inspections to do on properties from the year before. So this keeps the program moving through all sorts of conditions, as I said, for the past 40 years. And so this is our applications for next year that we're looking at, and asking for the council to recommend our forwarding these to MOUTH, to operate the program another year.
That sounds great, Martin. So appreciate that. So I'm gonna open it up to council a little bit. Vice President?
Well, Talbot County has, has long identified as, as a rural place, and this is a program that is vital to keep it that way. I only wish we found more funding to put toward this, this agriculture preservation easement, to keep Talbot County farms farming. But thank you very much, and, and for making sure that we're able to get this, this bit of farm land preservation funding.
Ms. Price?
Yeah, thank you very much. So when we send up a dozen, do we usually send up 12, or is it the different amount that we send up to the state every year?
Well, the program over the years has changed a little bit around, depending on available funds. During the last recession, we were actually only taking applications every other year because the funds were so slim. But we also had the opposite, where we had taken a lot more applications in. But 12 has been the average for the past few years. Actually, this time we're doing something different. There are two additional applications that are kind of for what they call the discount round. After they go through the individual county's own applications, they come back at the end of the year, and they look at what is left, state. of the year and they look at what is left statewide and who has made, you know, for their areas, the greatest, you know, discount from what they could receive as a fair market value for that property and will try to use remaining funds to preserve a few additional farms that way.
So how many of these will probably make it as being preserved?
That varies quite a bit. So far, for the current year we're in, we've only had one. It was a very large farm. It was the top of the list. They had a fair asking price and got most of it, not all of it, through the state. And that pretty much ended us this year. Next year will be different. The four top farms are all under 100 acres apiece. So it will allow us to get a little bit...
So all 12 of these won't make it, but several...
No, they will not. And that has never been the case. All the way through the 80s and 90s, it took people several years to be able to get their property in.
Well, thank you so much for your work on it.
So if I'm reading the list, if I did this math quickly correctly, it's about 1,600 acres that these individuals are willing to put into this. And when you're looking at some of them who are willing to put in over 200 acres, it's...
Yes.
I greatly appreciate those individuals, those farmers that are willing to do that for the community. That's a lot of land for an individual to own and to, even the 49, the 67, the 96, I mean, those are large chunks of land that could easily be a small neighborhood. So when you're thinking about farmers and taking care of the community and offering up 1,500 acres, that's a big statement. So I appreciate you working with these individuals.
Yeah, and on the opposite side, there is that, you know, benefit that goes along with that, that they have made a sacrifice too, I guess, to decide that they can continue with their business, their farming and all that kind of thing by entering into this deal with the state.
Win-win. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. DeVio. Okay, so council, being that said, is there a motion in a second to submit the application as presented?
I'll so move.
Well, second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, can you call it, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks a lot for a good job and we're really fortunate to have somebody like yourself to take care of that program and try to preserve some of these, all this land from the farmers and stuff. So we really appreciate your effort.
Okay, thanks for saying so. Okay.
Okay, council, introduction of legislation. She's coming up. She's coming up. I see that, yeah.
I believe 18 bills.
I didn't have to introduce you this time, you know?
No, no need to introduce me.
Yep, yep. So council, next we will have a series of capital-enabling bills that Angelo is going to introduce to everybody. So Angelo, I'm going to hand it off to you, if you would, please.
All right. Council, we have, I believe it's 18 bills. These are all bills that were included in the budget, in the fiscal 2022 budget. We are required, under our charter, to have capital-enabling legislation for all capital projects. So this is the first step in completing that requirement. We are introducing all of these bills. Hopefully, all of these bills will be introduced this evening.
Ms. Lane, do we have to do them separately or can we introduce them as a group?
We're going to do them individually.
We can, yeah, it can be either way. The first one is a bill to authorize a capital project for improvements to Airport Road. This bill authorized improvements to Airport Road from Maryland Route 50 to Golsboro Neck Road to improve traffic safety. And the council is authorized to expend $1.7 million for this project. Funding will come from development impact fees, funding from the Capital Projects Fund, and cost-sharing funds.
Go ahead, the council, support this. Are you doing a show of hands for introduction or...
Thank you, council.
Can I excuse, can I hold up for one second? I just want to make sure to remind everybody, the public hearing is supposed to start at 6:30. So anybody that needs a break or anything like that, we're probably going to be another half hour introducing these bills and getting this stuff, okay? So I just wanted to throw that out.
10, 15 minutes probably, right?
Hopefully.
Okay, well, I just want, I want everybody to be comfortable that we're going to be a few minutes, that's all. Okay? Go ahead. Thank you.
And I guess we will hold off on, say, the public hearing. They will all be the same evening. So go through them. The next one is a bill to amend, bill number 1419, the appropriation for a capital project for the installation of a belt filter press to upgrade the Region 2 St. Michael's Waste Water Treatment Plant. This bill authorized the county to spend up to $600,000 for this project. The project will be funded entirely from long-term debt if this bill passes. We had anticipated initially to receive some state and federal grants. Those have not become available, so we are amending the original bill to have all of the funding come through long-term borrowing.
This is for introduction?
Introduction.
Okay. The next bill is a bill to authorize a master plan for the Bill Burton State Park located at 29761 Bowling Brook Point Drive, Trap, Maryland. This bill authorizes the county to spend up to $50,000 of county funds from the Capital Projects Fund for the development of a master plan that would include design and construction of a park, to include park access, walking trails, and potentially analyze the availability of this, of the transfer of this property to Talbot County. This is a state park and this is the first step in exploring that possibility.
The four of us are introducing.
Okay, the next bill is a bill to amend, bill numbers 1366 and 1448, the appropriation for a capital project for improvements to Black Dog Alley. This is a continuing bill to try to improve Black Dog Alley for traffic safety. This will include design, engineering, property acquisition, drainage improvements, as well as widening sections of Black Dog Alley. This bill will authorize the county to expend up to $1,725,000 for this project. This is an increase of $1 million over prior authorizations and the additional funds will come from the Capital Projects Fund.
The four of us are introducing.
Okay, the next bill is a bill to authorize the expansion of broadband to unserved and underserved areas of Talbot County. This bill authorizes the county council to expend up to $2,312,000 for the expansion of broadband to unserved and underserved areas of the county. We are anticipating that this will be able to be funded by state and federal grants, but if that is not available, the use of franchise fees received from the county for cable television service, as well as capital projects funds, will be used to fund this project.
I think you have a right to raise your hand.
This is an exciting project.
It is an exciting project.
All four of us are sponsoring it.
Yes.
Okay, the next bill is a bill to amend, bill number 1244, the appropriation for a capital project for the roof replacement at the Talbot County Courthouse, South Wayne. This bill will authorize the county council to spend up to $595,000 in funding from the Capital Projects Fund for the roof replacement project. This is an increase of $150,000 from prior authorization.
I guess we have to keep a roof over our heads, right?
Yes.
And this is actually, in the end, we remember saving the county money because we're not splitting the project into two years.
This is for the courthouse.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is...
This is our roof.
This is our courthouse, okay. Got it.
The next one is a bill to amend, bill numbers 1393 and 1452, the appropriation for a capital project for the development of Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe, located at 13213 Lewistown Road, Queen Anne, Maryland. This bill will authorize the county council to expend up to $500,000 for the project. This is an ongoing project for the development of this park. This is an increase of $200,000 over prior authorizations. The total funding for the project is approximately $226,000 of state and federal grants and $274,000 from the capital projects funds.
Introduced by all four members present.
Okay, the next one is the bill for the replacement of the roof at the Easton High School. This bill authorizes the county council to expend up to $3,275,423 of funds for the capital project for the replacement of the roof at the high school. And this was originally slated to be a two-year project, but council has moved it into a one-year project to take advantage of cost savings by doing the project all in one summer rather than two.
I want to introduce that and I also want to thank Kevin Schaefer for bringing that to us in pension, saving the taxpayer a lot of money. And that figure was big, wasn't it, Angelo?
Yes.
It was like a million bucks, wasn't it?
It was significant. I don't have the exact number, but it was a lot of money.
I really want to thank the school and Kevin for doing the hard work on that for the county.
Yeah, it does make a difference.
Introduced by all four of us present.
The next one is a bill to amend, bill number 1459, the appropriation for a capital project to resurface, repave the Easton High School parking lot. This authorizes the county council to expend up to $191,700 for this project. All funds are coming from the Capital Projects Fund. However, the additional $21,700 that this bill authorizes is actually coming from another school capital project at their request. They are, we are going to abandon one project and there is legislation for that. And part of those funds will be applied to repaving and resurfacing the Easton High School parking lot.
Introduced by the four of us.
The next one is a bill to amend, bill number 1449, the appropriation for a capital project to replace the Easton High School football track. This bill authorizes the county council to expend up to $263,300 for this project, all from the Capital Projects Fund. This is an increase of $43,300 over prior authorization. And again, these funds came from a project that we are abandoning.
And three of us last night got a close look at how important this project is.
Yes.
Yeah, just to help people understand, that track's got gaps and it probably two to three inches wide, cracks right down the middle that students could get, athletes could get hurt. So it's, we held off for a very good while on this, so I'm excited to get that down for them.
And the next one is a bill to authorize a capital project for the construction of emergency medical services stations. This bill authorizes the county council to expend up to $1,205,000 in funding from the Capital Projects Fund for the acquisition of land, as well as the planning, design, construction, and equipping of an EMS station for the northern area of the county and potentially the Bay Hundred area of the county.
Introduced by the four members present.
And just, Mr. County Manager, just a brief, quick...
We're excited about this. This was something that the voters supported strongly to expand paramedic coverage in the north end of our county. We have put a flex unit in place to make sure that we keep our response times acceptable so that we can continue to save lives. So this is exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next bill is a bill to authorize a capital project for the replacement of the ice plant at the Talbot County Community Center Ice Brink. This bill authorizes the county to spend up to $1 million for the replacement of the ice plant. And this funding will come from state and federal grants or long-term borrowing or a combination of both state and federal grants and long-term borrowing.
Introduced by the four members present.
The next one is a bill to amend, bill number 1424, the appropriation for a capital project to purchase land for future county purposes. Bill number 1424 authorized the county council to spend up to $2 million of long-term borrowing for the purchase of county land. This bill does not increase that appropriation, but allows the county council to use capital projects funds as well as long-term borrowing for any portion of the purchase of land for future county needs. The total appropriation though remains unchanged at $2 million. It just allows us more flexibility.
Okay. And we should note that this is particularly directed at land for the...
Safety.
For the safety complex, for the sheriff's department.
Correct.
So again, related to the ballot measure and public safety.
Absolutely, yep.
Right, and when that, if you all remember, when that Talbot County Business Center has to come down for the airport relocation, airport runway relocation, that's why we need the new spot for the sheriff.
The next one is a bill to amend, bill number 1396, the appropriation for a capital project for improvements to the Talbot County Government Bay Street Facility parking lots, Easton, Maryland. This bill authorizes the county, authorizes the county council to expend up to $116,000 in capital projects funds for this project. It is an increase of $66,000 over prior authorizations.
Introduced by the four members present.
The next bill is a bill to authorize a capital project for the upgrade or replacement of the wastewater treatment plant at the Preserve at Y Mills. This bill authorizes the county council to expend up to $750,000 for this project and the scope of work includes the planning, design, engineering, and possibly construction of a new wastewater treatment plant for the 64-alot community. The proposed funding is approximately $250,000 of federal and state grants and $500,000 of funds from long-term borrowing. And all costs incurred for this capital project will be repaid by the users of this wastewater treatment plant at the Preserve at Y Mills.
So can I ask a question or make a comment? There is a public hearing on this tonight. Just because we introduced capital-enabling legislation, we still have to have the other piece of legislation to go along with it. So even if it looks like we're putting the cart before the horse, this would, project would not go through if it didn't pass after our public hearing and vote on the other resolution this evening. Right?
Yep.
Okay. The next one is a...
Introduced by the four members present.
The next one is a bill to authorize the construction of a Talbot County Public Safety Center. This bill authorizes the county council to expend up to $5 million for this project. This project is proposed to be funded through long-term borrowing. The scope of work includes, but is not limited to, the planning, design, preparation of construction documents, and construction and furnishing of a public safety center and the cost of any issuance of bonds. I will note that $5 million is for Phase 1 of this project. There will be an additional appropriation next year.
Again, I believe this is introduced by the four of us. I believe this is the biggest ticket item we're facing tonight and it is also one of those directly related to public safety as...
I agree.
Okay, the next bill is a bill to amend, bill numbers 1366, 1430, and 1454, the appropriations for a capital project for the Region 2 St. Michael's Wastewater Treatment System Rehabilitation and Improvements. This bill authorizes the county council to expend up to $10,595,000 for completion of this project. However, this phase is $2 million more than prior authorizations. The prior authorizations have been fully expended and the $2 million will be funded with $1 million of state and federal grants and $1 million of long-term borrowing. The long-term borrowing will be paid, repaid by users of the Region 2 wastewater treatment plant.
And are all of the county funds in this ultimately a liability of the ratepayers in that?
Yeah, actually, we have no county funds. These are all...
No, this is, this is no county, all of that goes to the ratepayers.
All it's state and federal grants for rural development and long-term borrowing also through rural development, which is under the Department of Agriculture.
So when the public sees anything that's wastewater treatment plants like the Preserve at Y's Mills or this one, that's all put into the ratepayers. It's not on the general taxpayers. Do not subsidize these types of projects.
Right. And the last bill...
So introduced by the four of us.
And the last bill is a bill to abandon, bill number 1461, which authorized a capital project for the resurfing, resurfacing, repaving of the St. Michael's School parking lot. This bill basically abandons that project and authorizes the county to move the $65,000 that was appropriated to this project to other projects and those funds have been reallocated... And those funds have been reallocated to the two school projects, the track, the football track, and the parking lot paving at the Easton High School. Sorry, couldn't quite remember the two.
Introduced by all four of us.
These bills will be known as bill numbers 1474 through and including bill number 1491. And the public hearing will be on Tuesday, July 13th at 6:30 PM.
So, don't go anywhere. Okay? So, first of all, this is one of your last meetings.
Yes, it is. It is my last meeting.
So, don't run out of here.
It's your last meeting.
So, I just really wanted to start everybody off about the dedication that you've had over the last 25 years, and all the work that you've done day and night. We can't thank you as a county, can't thank you as a council. You've worked with so many councils, so many staff. And I just really want to thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to Talbot County. I really do.
Thank you.
I really do. So, counsel?
The finance director, I mean, all these senior leadership positions, all of the people that work for the county are all incredibly important. But what is really special that you have been able to do so well is that while you may not want to run every department, you understand every department. And when we were looking for another finance director, Joy, and I know I said this to you in your interview, I think you were over there somewhere, to know that when the departments are bringing us their budgets, Angela has had such an understanding of everything that they do, that she was able to be sometimes Doctor No, to say, "No, they don't really need this," or "Yes, they do." And having a finance director with that knowledge is a hard thing, I mean, it takes years. But she knew. I mean, you could ask her about any department, and Angela knew. And I have enjoyed sharing our love of Excel spreadsheets, of which we've shared many, and have just, it's just been such a joy to work with you. I mean, I got into this because of budgets and business background and all of that. So, you know, this was, you know, you were going to be stuck with me anyway. But you're really, really very special. And I, again, I've enjoyed every moment of working with you, and your knowledge base is just unmatched. So, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart, and please don't go far, because we're still going to need you.
No, I'm not going far.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Ms. Lane does her homework. And it takes her a lot of time. And the lights are blazing in that finance office late at night in March and April, and all through the budget season. And the degree of that preparation shows in how well we can digest and easily understand the budget process. And so, thank you for all that you have done to help us look good in understanding what it is that we're facing, and helping us to be good stewards of the funds from the people of Talbot County. Thank you.
To give a brief example, I think it was last year's budget cycle we were going through, and you brought up, you said, "There's a department that has a van that I don't think they even know about." And so, I haven't mentioned that we're moving these around. But that's how well you work. You know what's out there, you know where the extras, the excesses, where things can be moved around without cutting anybody short, which is extremely difficult in this county with the revenue cap that we have. I can't imagine how difficult your career's been with every four years, you have five different personalities coming in and giving you different direction, and even at the same time, on the same day, completely different direction. You've balanced it extremely well, and I've really enjoyed working with you. And I just want to let you know that I think that you personally did the best job with that department that I could ever imagine for as much challenge as we throw at you, and as Talbot County in and of itself, how physically constrictive it is. That's not an easy task, and you've always managed it and handled it very well. And any, back when I was even thinking about getting elected, talking to friends and people who've paid attention to politics much longer and much more in-depth than I have, they always told me, "Go meet with Angela. She knows all the details." And they were 100% right. You do a terrific job, and I don't know where we'd be without you. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, but I think it's really been my privilege to work for many councils, I think eight or nine different councils. I started in 1991 with the county, and we have an amazing group of employees here that, you know, are always willing to help me and give me the information I need so I can give, hopefully, good information to you. But it really has been my privilege to work for the county. And I am looking forward to the next chapter, but I am only going to be a phone call or an email away if anything does come up. I'm not going to just walk out the door and never come back, or have any other contacts.
Mr. Stam?
Thank you.
No, I'd just like to say Angela doesn't like to be the center of attention, so this is very painful. It's been an honor. Class act, don't go far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing, I want to give 15 seconds to Mr. Past President Dirk Bartlett.
Well, I used to drive Angela crazy. I would go through the check run and see every check going out of the county, and I'd say, "What's this for? What's this for?" And I'd do 20 or 30, just like, it was like a pop quiz for her. "Oh, my God, what's that?" And she would respond back with every single thing in the right bucket. And she was glad when I finally stopped sending her
Thanks a lot, Angela. All right, counsel. All right, so we're getting ready to start the public hearing now. We've got several resolutions, bills, 299, 300, and 301, and 302.
Is anybody in the room here? Is everybody in the room that needs to be here for those?
I'll step out and make sure
Yeah, yeah. If you want to step out, make sure if anybody wants to. Yeah, yeah. That'd be great. Yeah. We're just going to wait two seconds here and see if anybody's been waiting, and we're going to do the best we can so everybody can hear some of these resolutions that we're announcing. Okay. Madam Secretary, could you, okay, Madam Secretary, could you please read the first resolution into the record, 299, please?
Resolution number 299, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap real property owned by Talbot County, Maryland, located on St. Michael's Road, Maryland Route 33, Easton, Maryland 21601, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 34, Grid 2, as Parcel 11, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I appreciate it. Thank you. So, Ray, Ray Miguel, you want to come on up?
Council President, just to let you know, on, I guess, May 5th, the Public Work Supervisory Board met related to Resolution 299. At that meeting, the Public Work Supervisory Board voted 5 to 0, basically recommending that, what was it, Resolution 299, they found 299 basically recommend against adoption of 299. So, that was what was found by the Public Work Supervisory Board. If you want, the Planning Commission also found Resolution 299 not consistent with the comp plan.
I got you. I got you. Miguel?
Nothing further, other than I think in your staff report that you received, we outlined the Planning Commission's findings for determination of inconsistency with the 2016 comp plan.
Did you want to give, you know, the top reason or two?
Sure, for the public, the Planning Commission noted that the resolution is inconsistent with the zoning district, which is countryside preservation. And they also noted, more importantly, because they have to determine consistency with the comp plan, that it was inconsistent with the countryside preservation rural reserve planning area, as that area is reserved for rural agriculture and low-density residential uses. That protects the rural character of land bordering the growth areas of towns, prevents sprawl, and provides a visual boundary to the growth areas. And they also noted that it's in the Tier Four area.
And Mr. Clark, also, there was something in here about inconsistency with a prior resolution. Can you just speak to that for a second?
Yeah, that is associated with Resolution 175. 175 is the Forest Main that extends from the Reunionville Pump Station all the way to the Royal Oak Pump Station. In that resolution, basically Resolution 175 notes that you need to be contiguous with the Forest Main. At the same time, you know, it really has to be a failing septic system as determined by the Environmental Health Office. So, there were those conditions laid out for Resolution 175. Ultimately, the Public Work Supervisory Board in their memo to the county council noted that it was inconsistent with 175, and the development, I guess, also was, but they held inconsistent with the original authorization of 175.
So, basically, you're telling us even if we wanted to, we can't do that for all those reasons?
That was the recommendation of the board, yes, ma'am. And just for the council and the public's information as well, in the event that the county council votes down Resolution 299, in accordance with the amendment procedures for the Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan, the applicant, in this case, would be the county, would have to wait two years before reapplying. So, that's basically the rules.
Can I ask one more question of the county attorney? Okay, well, it's just, it may, people that might want to speak in this public hearing may decide that they don't need to. So, with what he said about two years, what are, though we can't do it tonight because we're missing Mr. Pack, who also introduced this resolution, what are our options if we choose not to vote it down? What else can we do?
It could be withdrawn, and there is precedent for Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan resolutions having been withdrawn in the past. 2001 Resolutions 87 and 91 were both withdrawn. And when the members introducing those withdraw them, then there's no one to introduce it, and it's withdrawn, it doesn't go forward.
So, that kind of saves us the two-year wait. And if I understand, also, we would have to do something to amend Resolution 175 to even try to bring this back if we were to choose to do so. Is that right? Maybe?
We'd have to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, at this point, Mr. Pack's not here. So, I think probably what we should do, counsel, is open it, okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. I think we need to open it and see if anybody asked anything. So, let's start over here to my left. On the first row, would anybody like to speak about 299? Second row. Third row. Fourth. The gentleman in the back. Okay? To my right, first row. Second row. Third. Fourth row. Yes. How you doing, Mr. Stam?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, Tom Halsbach, T95 Bay Street in Easton. I just wanted to make the observation that there aren't a lot of people here tonight because there's been a lot of email traffic and discussion about the fact that the Planning Commission did not certify
Yes, sir.
this as being consistent with the comprehensive plan. And as a result of that, it has been presumed that the council is not in a position to go forward with this at this time. And I believe that's the reason why you got me here, nobody else.
But you can anyway.
Yeah, just to me. But as long as I'm sitting here, I do want to say that I've been engaged with and part of a lot of discussion about this over the past several weeks. I've never heard anybody say that they're against the repurposing center. That's not what this is. No one's trying to block the repurposing center from happening. It's just that, as the Planning Commission found, they felt there are some other alternatives to extending a sewer line for one toilet for these couple of guys, who are in the woods, by the way, that, you know, are there some other alternatives that we could consider? I feel like the vice president here is a fly buzzing around my head. And that some of these things should be explored as an alternative way of supporting this repurposing center. In fact, it's, there's a need for something more than a porta potty out there. But I just want to be sure that it's clear that there's no groundswell of opposition to the idea of the repurposing center itself, the one thing has nothing to do with the other. So, those are the only comments I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Halsbach.
Thank you. And there's one more row in the back, if anybody had any more comments. Okay. Okay, so, since Mr. Pack is here, this is going to be eligible for vote the next meeting, which is the 22nd. So, at this time, we're going to still allow written comments up until this Friday, if anybody has anything else they want to write in about at this time. So, Madam Secretary, do we need to read it into the record? Or did you?
She already did.
You already did?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, okay. All right, no problem.
I'm going to come to the next one.
Okay. So, let's move on to Resolution 300.
Resolution number 300, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap commercial real property located on Ocean Gateway and Marina Drive, Trapp, Maryland 21673, and shown on Talbot County Tax Map Number 62 as Parcels 13, 21, 42, 43, and 80, from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status, and to reclassify and remap residential real property located on Ocean Ferry Point Drive, Trapp, Maryland 21673, and shown on Talbot County Tax Maps Number 62 as Parcels 1 through 19, from unprogrammed to S2, future planned sewer service in three to five years.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ray and Miguel, can we just get a quick description of what's going on with 300?
Sure thing. On May 5th, the Public Surveillance Board met and ultimately put forth a motion to recommend adopting Resolution 300 with an amendment to remove the S2 classification for the residential properties. You know, I'll let Miguel talk about the Planning Commission.
Planning Commission voted 5-0 to certify that that resolution was consistent with the comprehensive plan. And, yeah, that's it.
Any questions?
All right, guys. Counsel, anything from these guys here?
I mean, do you want to say anything about what the project is, just for the public?
I can give that if you like.
Thank you.
Very point. This is basically to reclassify pretty much the commercial lots as S1, immediate priority status for sewer service. Currently, we have, I think, is five, if not six, commercial properties. Three of those commercial properties are developed. It's basically a marina, there's a, let's say, a boat building operation that's going on, as well as a hotel. And then there's, I think, I think there's another three vacant parcels. Then, at the same time, there's also 19, I believe, residential properties that are just down the road. It's a private road just past those commercial properties along the water. This just gets toward of the commercial properties at this time.
Because this one's just for the commercial?
That is correct.
Well, as drafted, it's for both S1 and S2 for the residential. But the recommendation is that we take out the S2 portion of this.
S2 for the residential property.
So, it's only for the commercial.
But just to be clear, the Planning Commission voted that, certified that the resolution as it's written was consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we're going to open it up to the public. So, once again, here to the left, first row, second row. row, third, fourth, and the lonely guy in the back. You okay back there?
Mr. Stamp, you checked on all four of the public hearings outside?
Yeah, yeah, at the time I walked out, we only had one for the airport public hearing.
Okay.
And they're, they're, they're alert to anyone coming in.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
First row, second row, third, fourth, okay, ladies in the back, okay? Okay, yes, come on up. Mary, would you like, if you could tell us your name and who you are?
Thank you for having a public meeting. This is great. My name is Althea Dolan. I think you've gotten emails from me and perhaps a phone call or two over the last year or so, but first of all, I do want to thank you all for the work that each of you do. I know that it's very time-consuming, having personally invested in trying to observe the meetings or listen in via phone. I can only imagine the outside time that you spend in terms of preparing for this meeting. I also appreciate you taking the time for public comments. I too, it actually was nice that I was here to see Mr. Seifis get his award as, as Correctional Officer of the Year. Having been the jail nurse beginning in the 1980s, I worked with officers who demonstrated professionalism and competence, so it's nice to see this officer's work recognized. Also, having been Angela's elementary school classmate, I wish her the best in her retirement. I worked with her at the health department, and I knew then she was a gem, and we sorely missed her when she left and came here. Lastly, I just want to be sure that I can now say in person that I do continue to support keeping the Talbot Boys Monument on the courthouse lawn. I support building up-
Ms. Dolan, Ms. Dolan-
Yes.
We're here for
Resolution 300.
Oh, well, I'll just say that I support building up, not tearing down, and I won't need to come back for the public comment period later. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you.
Okay, so, being that said, that's eligible for the next meeting on the, on the 22nd, when the full council is here. So, I'm going to leave, once again, I'm going to leave this open to 300 to Friday at noon time, if anybody has anything they want to write in or last comments, okay? Madam Secretary, would you read 301 into the record?
Resolution number 301, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to approve a capital project for the improvements associated with the wastewater treatment system of Rustling Oaks Drive, Wyomills, Maryland, shown on Talbot County Tax Map 1, Grid 23, as parcel 98.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Go ahead, Brad.
At the May 5th Public Surveillance Board meeting, the Public Surveillance Board recommended the county council table Resolution 301. At this time, I think they would like to see the preliminary engineering report completed. Just so the council's aware, I guess working with Patrick, the county attorney, a draft memorandum of understanding has been completed that would then be sent over to the homeowners association for their review and approval. I would also note, too, that, you know, with, with this resolution, this is actually something that we need to do in order to get state funding, so, you know, I would like to try and move forward with this if we can, with this project.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, the planning commission, at their June 2nd meeting, voted 5-0 to certify that this resolution is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
I'd ask Mr. Clark just to give a brief overview, either of you, as far as what's going on in that community that requires possibly the county's help.
Yeah, back in 2004, the, the community of Preserve Wyomills constructed a wastewater treatment plant that was roughly about, I believe it is, may have been 20,000 gallons a day. Technically, what's happened is that, you know, they've had way too much tankage before the wastewater treatment plant. They took out all of the solids of the foods for the microorganisms. The treatment plant pretty much has never worked properly. It is a treatment system that uses a rotating biological contactor to grow the films. Those films consume the organics and then ultimately help with, call it, let's say, the denitrification process. That then, the wastewater is then treated to a permit requirement, and then it's spray irrigated. Because the, the plant was unable to comply with the permit requirements, they have been spray irrigating an effluent that isn't consistent with their discharge permit. Because the facility was constructed before 2008, they would be eligible for Bay Restoration Funds in assistance of having a grant replace that wastewater treatment plant, and that's one of the reasons we're here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we'll, we'll go ahead and open it to the public on Resolution 301. Anybody in the first row, second, third, fourth? Okay, thank you. And just come on over here to the right side, anybody on the first row, 301, second? Okay, yes, Madam, come on up.
I have a question.
Well, you should stand up and, and you, say who you are. Yeah, come up front, man, please, and tell us who you are.
Kathy Lebel, I live in Easton.
What was your last name?
Lebel, L-I-E-B-L. And I have a question as to whether any of the county funds are going to be used to pay for this new treatment plant. I thought I heard in the, in the budget material that, that that was not the case, but I'm looking for confirmation, since it appears that it wasn't-
Angela could say that, but the users of any wastewater treatment plant and sewer service areas, they are, what's the word, Angela?
They're responsible for the cost. Yeah. Okay. Now, these general funds- So although you did mention potentially long-term financing, didn't you? So does that come out of general funds?
The users may-
The interest, or anything on it? No?
No, so it's isolated. We are fronting money for the, the preliminary engineering report that will be paid back by the community, so we're fronting the money for that, but it will have to be self-sufficient and paid for by the users of the system, not the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, anybody on the, on the third row, the fourth row, and in the back? Okay, all right, so, um, once, once again, we'll, it's eligible for vote next meeting, the 22nd, with the full council here, and we're going to leave this open to, in the record to Friday. Any more comments or emails, that you're, you're welcome to comment on it, okay? So, Madam Secretary, we have one more, 302. Would you mind reading that into the record, please?
Resolution number 302, a resolution to approve execution of a lease of unimproved land at the Easton Airport, described as Lot 9200, consisting of 35,200 square feet, more or less, for a term of 30 years, with the right to renew for up to two additional terms of five years each, with rent of $32,384.04 per year, subject to annual escalation in an amount equal to the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index up to 5%, and with a requirement that the tenant, Aravanti Hangar LLC, construct an aircraft hangar and related improvements, and to approve execution of a two-year option to lease unimproved land at the Easton Airport, described as Lot 9180, and located adjacent to Lot 9200, which Lot 9180 consists of 36,080 square feet, more or less, from a, for a term of 30 years, with the right to renew for up to two additional terms of five years each, with a non-refundable option payment in the amount of $24,000, payable in monthly installments of $1,000 per month during the option term, and to approve, in the event the option is exercised, the terms of said lease, with rent in the amount of $33,193.56 per year, subject to annual escalation in an amount equal to the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index up to 5%, and with a requirement that the tenant, Aravanti Hangar LLC, construct an aircraft hangar and related improvements.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, appreciate it. Welcome. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah, counsel, thank you. I appreciate it. It's, it's exciting time at Easton Airport. As you, as you well know, we've-
Can you tell everybody who you are, please?
Oh, absolutely.
Yep.
Michael Risher, Airport Manager, and here with me today is a-
Steve Har with Aravanti.
Steve Har. He is the proponent. Aravanti is a upstart charter operation, and it's exciting because we're, we're looking at, they're looking at constructing a hangar on Joe Marsh Lane, and, you know, to house their operation, and then put under option to build a second hangar. So it's going to be quite a complex one, once it's all done. They've been great, Steve's been great to work with for, for, you know, better part of the last year, putting the deal together, so, it's a good deal for a county, bringing pilots, already creating pilots' jobs out at the airport, so it's an exciting operation.
Sounds great.
Okay, well, Aravanti was actually founded by one of my sons. I have five sons, and my, my middle son made quite a bit of money in the healthcare industry, and he kind of got tired of the healthcare industry and wanted to get into aviation. He's a pilot himself, but I'm, I'm retired airline pilot from American with 35 years of service, Piedmont, US Air and American Airlines, and was instructing for Airbus down in Miami, and COVID hit, and we got laid off, and at the same time, my son decided he wanted to do this, and he had some investor guys that wanted to get into it, too. We're basing our, our whole program is based on the Piaggio Avanti aircraft, which you may have seen flying around here. Some people say it looks like a, a hammerhead shark, and some people say it looks like a catfish, and it has the engines in the back. It's the fastest twin-engine turboprop airplane, and has been since it was started in 1991. Climbs right up to 41,000 feet, which is the same altitude I was at in a 330, flying back and forth across the Atlantic two years ago with, for American, except the cabin altitude in this airplane's 2,000 feet lower than what my cabin altitude was in a big Airbus. So it's quite a performing airplane, and sips gas, has a low carbon emissions footprint, if you will, and just great aircraft. It's, it's same interior as, as a mid-sized jet, and I burn 100 gallons an hour as opposed to 400 gallons an hour, so. So, we want to build two hangars here, is what we're proposing, because this is going to be the heart of our operation. The airplane's range is perfect for going from the, the northeast down to Florida, and that's what most of our clients will be doing, is back and forth to Florida, or back and forth up to New York, Boston area, that type of thing, out to the east, out to the Mississippi. This is where we've planned to focus on, and being this close to Washington DC, and the lower cost and little quieter environment that we have here in Talbot County is perfect for us. We would like to build two hangars, as I said, one 100-foot hangar, equivalent to the Trident Hangar, which would be right next door, similar in size and similar in design, and then the next hangar over would be an 80-foot wide hangar, which we will be using for a maintenance facility. I just had to leave and run out to the airport because I have an airplane that's going to Tulsa, Oklahoma, for a 200-hour inspection. You know, think about the cost of that, the time it's involved and everything. I'd like to be able to have that 200-hour inspection done right here at home. It makes my airplane much more accessible to me, if I'm not having to send it that far away to get work done, so.
Thank you, gentlemen. Great job, and I can thank you for investing in Talbot County. That, that's a big deal to us, and it's, it's a business decision you make, you've made, and I can't thank you enough. And anything that we can do to help you to make the business that much easier for you, we're here, we're here for you.
Thank you. Michael's been excellent to help us get this thing going, so, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate it, too. So, um, you all willing to, good? Rush, you good?
Yeah, call the jury.
So, so, okay, guys, so we're going to open it up to the public hearing. So, I think we're, we're good, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open up Resolution 2, or 302, row number one, two, three, four, five. Okay, on the right-hand side, anybody on first row, second, third, fourth, and lady in the back, yeah? Okay, all right, so, Resolution 302 is eligible actually, you know, on, on next meeting or tonight?
We could do this. I'll make a motion to take action tonight.
We could do this tonight.
Yep.
We could do this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and vote on this tonight.
Okay. So, do you need to do a third read, or we don't on resolution?
No, okay. Madam Secretary, you okay? Mr. Vice President? Okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 302 has passed. Thank you. Okay. All right. Ms. Lane's coming up again. All right.
She didn't get away that well.
It's going to be good.
Oh, boy, we could do it again?
Okay.
She's like, no.
So, so this is going to be discussion of proposed assessments on the taxpayers' impact for COVID-19, and, and Mrs. Lane, she's done such a great job on coordinating all that, so she's going to tell the public on, on what's going on with all that.
Back in April of 2020, and again in December of 2020, the county council approved the waiver of all interest and penalties on sewer bills through, that waived the interest and penalties on sewer bills through June 2021 to assist our citizens dealing with the impacts of COVID-19. And while we are certainly coming out of the economic troubles that the COVID-19 pandemic has caused, we currently have 4.3% of our county sewer accounts have a balance of more than one quarter. That's a, you know, it's a large number, so my recommendation is that we continue to waive interest and penalties on the sewer bills through December 2021 to give our citizens an opportunity to get caught up. You know, many people I know are starting to get back to work, and businesses are rebounding, but once you're behind, it's hard to get yourself caught up. So my recommendation is that we extend the waiver of interest and penalties on sewer bills through December 2021. I have discussed this with Ray Clark, and he is also in favor of extending the waiver of these interest and penalties just to assist our citizens, and it also gives citizens who are really having difficulty getting caught up, the opportunity to explore any programs that may be able to assist them with the payment of these bills, as well as other bills. There are a number of programs that are in the startup phase right now, so I think there will be some assistance available in the near future to help citizens who have been having challenges with paying some of these bills.
Ms. Lane, you, you said 4.3% to more than 90 days in arrears is, is an unusually high number. What, what would be more typical in a normal economy?
I, I don't know that I have a percentage, but this is much more, I mean, we're getting more calls from people who are struggling, and we actually have a number of accounts, I don't have a percentage on that, that are more than two quarters behind. And, you know, when our bills are $600 a year and higher, that's hard for people to come up with, you know, what could be a $600 bill in addition to rent and car payments and everything else they may have going on. So at least by not charging the interest and penalties, it just, they still have to pay the bill, but it gives them, you know, at least an opportunity to not have that balance keep growing. It's just the, the actual bill.
But, it's, it's, it's a, it's a struggling, it's, it's a troubling sign of, of times, but we, both the federal government and the state government have been stepping up to, to do this, and this is, this is one thing that the county government can do to help those who are in trouble with, with the present economy as well.
And just like you said, Mr. Vice President, we're stepping up to the plate because that's what we're here for. We're, we're here to help, and that's what we're doing. And people need to realize, we're, we're here to help people that have lost their jobs and struggling. So, any, any, any more comments?
I was going to say, so the old saying is, I'm from the government and I'm here to help, but in this case, we truly are. Has the number percentage come down, though? I mean, you know, a year ago, was it much higher than 4% that were behind?
Actually, a year ago, it wasn't this high.
Oh, really?
It's actually gotten a little bit worse.
Huh, interesting.
But I think it's, you know, people are balancing, what are they going to pay-
But I think it's, you know, people are balancing, what are they going to pay? And, you know, we can't cut off sewer.
Wow, that surprises me.
So it, you know, is the bill that I think has been sort of put on the back burner sometimes when people have had to juggle.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention again.
I'm trying to look through my emails to find one from the Neighborhood Service Center. It is, it's alarming how many people have been coming in needing assistance, especially those who've never needed any help before.
Right.
So this is definitely something that I think that we should be taking, taking up.
What I was going to say is that, just want to recognize Angela and the Finance Office. You know, this, this pandemic that we've been experiencing for over the last 500 days, our emergency operations center, our community has come together and done amazing things to help people. And early on, it was the health-related issues. Can't let our guard down now. Well, we are a little bit. It's great to be in a room together. But the truth be known is that this pandemic is still affecting a lot of people. And so part of the challenge that we have is the federal government is raining money down to try to help people with, with guidance coming out every day. We have to figure that out and how to streamline that to make sure we get it to the right people at the right time to make a difference. And our finance group and others in county staff have been working really hard with our community to get that out. So, again, this is one other way that we can address this ongoing pandemic that is still affecting people economically. So kudos to Angela for stepping forward with this idea. And certainly I support council's acceptance of this action as well.
Thanks, Mr. Stan. Appreciate it. So, council, is there a motion in a second to approve the proposed?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Okay, will we sit here and talk about you for 15 more minutes?
No, no, no.
Someone around applause.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate it. Okay. All right, Mr. County Manager, you're in the spotlight.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Mr. Council President and members of the council have four pieces of business for you tonight. First are county boards and committee appointments. The first one I'm seeking your approval on is for the Commission on Aging. We're requesting the reappointment of Julie Crocker, private citizen representative to the Commission on Aging.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
The second one I have is the Social Services Board of Directors requesting the appointment of Elaine Wilson to serve to the Social Services Board of Directors.
So moved. Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
The next item we have is Talbot County Family Network Board of Directors requesting the appointment of Bernice Wore, Wore?
Mariella.
Mariella to serve on that board.
So moved.
I tried hard to get that right beforehand.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
And the final for board and committee appointments is the Upper Shore Workforce Investment Board requesting the appointment of Michael Brewstein to that board.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Council Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
The next item I have is requesting a letter of support for building African-American mines Incorporated BAM's grant application to the Maryland Historical Trust African-American Heritage Preservation Program. As you read in your agenda packet, we're requesting council approve to submit a letter to support the building African-American mine incorporated grant application to the Maryland Historical Trust for African-American Heritage Preservation Project in a sum of $100,000. If awarded, grant funds will be used to construct an academic center for the BAM program. No county funds are required.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Similarly, we are requesting council's consideration to issue a letter of support to the Shields family grant application to Maryland Historical Trust African-American Heritage Preservation Program. Again, as you see in your council packet, we're requesting approval, submit this letter for them to that, to that organization. The amount of $100 if approved, grant funds will be used to establish a Bellevue Passage Museum to preserve the history and honor the collective legacy of life in Bellevue. No county funds would be required.
That was 100,000, though.
Yeah, I said, I'm sorry, 100,000. What did I say?
You said 100.
It was close.
My goodness. Getting late.
This is zeros. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
And finally and gladly, I would like council's consideration. I have Ray Clark, if you don't mind coming forward, Ray. We're requesting, actually Department of Public Works is requesting the award of, award contract bid 2008 for sewer connection to the Talbot County Community Center on Route 50. As you read in your agenda packet, we're requesting council approval to award bid 2008 for the sewer connection to the County Community Center in the amount of $321,324.35. And Ray is here to provide more detailed information and to answer any questions. Ray?
We've been up for this for many years.
Right, right. So we're ready to start.
That's good. That's good.
So, yeah, at this point in time, if you need any information, we have worked with EastCom, LTD, who's a low bidder on this. They are doing work for us in the sanitary district down St. Michael's as well as at Yak Club Road, Deepwater Point Road. So, I mean, they are, they're a firm, I think, out of Upper Marlboro in Maryland. But again, we've done a lot of work with them. And so.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate your hard work on that, you know. I know it's been a long time, Mary, but we've never forgotten.
Now, let's get it done.
Looks like it's going to become to fruition now.
Well, this has been going on since I first came on the council. We've been pumping and hauling for at least 11 years, right? Maybe, maybe longer.
I think it was 12 years, 12 years.
Yeah. I mean, so that has just been an enormous expense. And, you know, we waited a little bit. And Mr. Bartlet's out there, he knows about this one, and I think you're going to applaud this one as well. But we thought, you know, the hospital might be here by now. We were going to try to wrap that project together, but with the delays of the hospital, it was, it was time to just get this done. So thank you very much. So with that, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, second. Madam Secretary?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. DiVillo?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes your county manager report for this evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stan. What a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anybody need a break for anything? No? Good? Okay. So let's start with the, the public comments. So, Mr. Vice President, could you, could you sort of set the round rules for us a little bit and help everybody understand about how to be respectful and what we're doing today?
So, public comment is an opportunity for members of the public in attendance to address the council regarding any council matter. Any member of the public desiring to be heard by the council shall raise their hand. Actually, what we're going to do is call from the signup sheet and be recognized by the council president. Once recognized, the person shall state their name and address and then direct their comments to the council as a body, not to individual council members or other members of the public. Each speaker shall be permitted to speak no more than three minutes. Those speaking on behalf of an organization shall be given up to five minutes unless authorized, otherwise authorized by the council president. Speakers are expected to be courteous and respectful, personal, impertinent, or slanderous comments shall not be tolerated.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I appreciate it. Okay, so let's get right and get started. So.
So our first one is Clive Ewing.
Okay.
And I will have a question. Several people have checked representing a, a group or association, but we've got several people who have indicated they're representing that same association. So are we speaking as, for the, Mr. Ewing, are we speaking for the whole group or in which case we can have the five minutes?
Yes, I'll be speaking for the Preserve Talbot History Organization.
Okay, so then we'll skip down.
Probably marked the wrong box or perhaps.
So you're speaking as an individual then?
No, I'm, I'm speaking for the group.
And so we only, so we only need to call you?
The others will be speaking for themselves.
Okay. So we only need to call you of all those who have checked for the group?
No, the others will speak as individuals.
They're individuals. He's five minutes. We got three-minute people.
Got it.
Got it.
All right. Well, good evening. Thanks a lot. Glad to be here. Appreciate it. Yeah, yeah. Good evening, council. My name is Clive Ewing. I'm speaking on behalf of the Preserve Talbot History Organization. As you're aware, a lawsuit has been filed at the federal court in Baltimore to tear down the Talbot Boys Monument. The plaintiffs allege the monument located on the Talbot County courthouse grounds violates their constitutional rights. As a result of this lawsuit, we undertook an examination of the Baltimore courthouse, where this lawsuit might be heard, to determine how it addresses its own deep history. We learned that the Baltimore courthouse has multiple historical exhibits and displays, both physical and virtual. In fact, federal judges and attorneys proclaim that they have placed these exhibits to, quote, "heighten the public's awareness of the rich history of the court, to enhance the administration of justice, and to educate those who frequent the courthouse about the court's impact on history," unquote. The Baltimore Federal Court chooses to honor a wide spectrum of characters, including Judges Paca and Bland, known slaveholders here in Maryland. There is even a portrait of Judge William Giles, father to a Confederate soldier, a leader in the effort to move free blacks to Africa, and who was a big fan of Justice Taney, an author of the Dred Scott decision. Our point is that the federal court in Baltimore has purposely found a way to honor these people for their contributions to history, notwithstanding their participation in slavery or their inclination to the Southern cause. No court has ever found that these images violated anyone's constitutional rights. Likewise, the U.S. Supreme Court has images of historical figures as part of the very fabric of its property. Just like in Baltimore and Talbot, the Supreme Court honors multiple people who are particularly impactful to the course of history and some may even be deemed offensive. For those who believe there must be an absolute separation of church and state, certainly they must be offended by the image of the Islamic prophet Muhammad and the Jewish prophet Moses, both standing high above the Supreme Court. For those who want to cancel our nation's founding fathers, who had any connection to the institution of slavery, certainly they must be offended by the image of John Marshall, our fourth chief justice, who held over 100 slaves and whose image also stands high above in the Supreme Court. Again, not a single employee or visitor of the Supreme Court has been found to have had their constitutional rights violated by the presence of these controversial images. The displays at the Supreme Court, the Baltimore Court, and here in Talbot County are not intended to offend anyone, but to pay tribute to persons or events that were particularly impactful to our collective history. So what was the intent of the Talbot Boys Monument conceived more than a century ago? It was, like many Civil War monuments across our nation, north and south, north and south, conceived to mark the 50th anniversary of the Civil War and record the names of the men who fought for their cause. As far, as for the statue that sits atop the base, it was intended to represent simply, quote, "youth and courage." And what of the intent of the Talbot Countyans today, many of which sit behind me, who'd want to keep this monument at the courthouse? There are many. Chief among them is that the monument is part of a continuum of memorials that our county holds in the highest regard on our courthouse yard, including to the memory of Talbot Countyans who fought and died during World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, and to Frederick Douglass, our famous abolitionist. We believe the Talbot courthouse should continue to embrace the rich history of this county. Otherwise, we are on a path to an Orwellian future, where government property and buildings become stark monoliths that only evoke the message of the party currently in power. If this lawsuit prevails, not only will the Talbot Boys be taken down, but the precedent will have been set to sandblast those images that surround the Supreme Court, paint over all those portraits displayed by the Baltimore Federal Court, and indeed dispose of the remainder of the monuments at the Talbot County courthouse.
30 seconds.
Therefore, we ask the council to not only continue its support for the Talbot Boys, but to consider building up our rich history by the addition of a Union soldier monument as envisioned by our county council, our county commissioners in 1914. We ask the council to resist the pleadings of those who are both historically ignorant and perpetually offended. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, Lynn Milkie.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, although Mr. Ewing sort of stole most of my thunder. Tip O'Neill said that all politics is local, and when it comes to Confederate monuments, so are they. In this case, as Mr. Ewing has pointed out, and as other members of the Preserve Talbot History will point out, our monument is unique to Talbot County history. And it was part of a movement that came about with the celebration of the 50th anniversary of Gettysburg, where Talbot County Union soldiers and Talbot County Confederate soldiers fought each other on Culp's Hill. They came back having seen one monument to the Confederates and one monument to the Union and wanted to replicate that here. As it turned out, the monument to, to the Confederates was financed and built, and even though there was a committee appointed to finance the monument to the northern members who fought, it didn't happen. World War I happened and they were off to the races. If you look at history in Kent County, in 1916, there was one monument that was built to the Union, to the, to the Union and to the Confederacy. And it wasn't until 1991 that they supplemented that monument with a monument to the U.S. colored troops. So I'm here to say that I support a, a, a series of monuments to Talbot County's Civil War history. And that would consist of keeping the Talbot Boys, having a Union memorial, and also a memorial to the U.S. colored troops, in particular, the Unionville troops. And I think that they are unique to this area and should be celebrated on the courthouse lawn. And anybody who opposes that, I just don't get it. So I just think that we should preserve the Talbot Boys and build up rather than tear down. I'd just like to say that this suggestion came in 2015 from your predecessor council that says, we'll keep the Talbot Boys, we welcome a Union memorial. And recently, as January 14th of 2021, Mr. Potter said, and I quote, "The present monument does nothing to depict the accuracy of the Civil War. What about the Union soldiers? It's the Move the Monument Coalition and the NAACP who is working to get the complete history preserved. So are we. Let's do it together. They've done it in Franklin, Tennessee. We can do it here." Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Mr. Stan. I appreciate it.
Next, Ashley Sard.
Hi, my name's Ashley. What I wanted to say about this is that first, I tried not to involve myself a whole lot with it because I like to do a lot of other things in the community. However, with raising children, they've had lots of questions that have come about.[1711.28] However, with raising children, they’ve had lots of questions that have come about. And I can tell you, for every bad thing I’ve had to tell them, they can actually visualize the good that came from being able to see how far we’ve come. The Talbot Boys statue was made to commemorate the Marylanders who fought for the South during the Civil War. The names that are on that are people of those that were born here, and this is where they should remain. Many still have family from here in Talbot County, and history is an important part of everyday life. You can’t simply remove it, to erase it, or pretend it didn’t happen. The history of Talbot County included the good, the bad, the ugly. It included families beaten on both sides. The main point of this is none of us have to agree or like it, but we have to understand it’s part of our history, and it’s what makes Talbot County unique. As I said, there’s no way to change our history. Removing the statue does not do that. It takes away the reminder that we have to push for the unity we want to have. We have to be part of making that difference. We have to make everyday life better for everyone involved, every member of our community, every member of our county. And removing history and not acknowledging it sets up the perpetual cycle of repeating it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Next, name appears to be Shaw Bell, if I’m reading the handwriting correctly. Shaw Bell. Maybe I’m not of trap. If not, we’ll move along.
Yes, ma’am. Mr. Bell? Ms. Bell?
Me?
Is it Shaw Bell?
It’s Shaw Bell. Shaw Bell?
I’m sorry, I don’t hear very well.
Okay, no problem. No problem.
Not, we’ll move along. Christine Dolan.
My name’s Christine Dolan. I live two blocks from here on Harrison Street. As most of you know, me here in town, I’m a journalist, but I’m not here tonight as a journalist. I’m here tonight to publicly apologize to Mr. Callahan, to Mr. DeValio, to Laura Price, because when I have investigated this entire statue matter, and the fact that people have been called racist by people on the side that wanted to keep the statue there, I’m embarrassed as an American, I’m embarrassed as a resident of Talbot County, I’m embarrassed of the press reporting it, I’m ashamed that Talbot Spy would put a tape there with quoting somebody on a tape calling people in Talbot County racist. I’m ashamed, most importantly, because of my background, because I was a spokesperson for the 1990 USA Nelson Mandela tour across this nation. And the one thing I learned, being around somebody like Nelson Mandela, is you forgive and you act like a lady and a gentleman when you’re trying to bring unity into any type of situation. What he did in South Africa was something that was magnificent. What Bishop Tutu did for the truth and reconciliation in South Africa was magic. And I am ashamed, and I know a lot of people in this county are ashamed, for how this situation has evolved, because it’s gotten so personal. I’m ashamed that people haven’t stood up. I’m ashamed that people haven’t come more forward for this. I think that there should be a second statue out there. I think, I agree with what Lynn just said in terms of elevating the Unionville soldiers that are here. I don’t know if anybody knows this, but four of them got Congressional Medals. I just found that out when I did my own history just recently. I’m not a buff about the Civil War. I’m a Yankee, I’m a Bostonian, I’m an Irish Catholic, so I know about being discriminated against because of Cromwell. I don’t go back centuries in my life and think that I should get reparations from the Queen Mother. But at the same time, as a journalist who has covered politics for 40 years, who has covered slavery globally and historically for 21 years in 140 countries around the globe, I can tell you that when I saw the sign across from the courthouse months ago on the second floor that said “400 Years of Hate,” my heart stopped. My heart stopped. So this is my offer tonight, since I have given close to 60 lectures across Delmarva Peninsula for the last almost 10 years that I’ve been out here talking about human trafficking and slavery. I am willing to set up a commission to bring people together. I will never have anybody who’s involved in this mess, who has called anybody a racist, part of this. I am willing to put a bust of Harriet Tubman that a friend of mine has already created, who lives in Australia. I met him five years ago when I was down there on human trafficking tour. He created it, he was so impressed with Harriet Tubman’s, I know she’s not from this county, but to help one of the plaintiffs in your case, who goes through the front door of the courthouse, if we’ve got Frederick Douglass on the outside, if we can put a unity and a second statue bringing people together on the outside, maybe we can put Harriet Tubman on the inside, so when people walk in there, they can be inspired by what this woman did, because she has a place of stature as much as there is across this entire historical saga. And we can put the Union and honor the Unionville soldiers, and then elevate the four who got some Congressional Medal. I think what we need now is unity. We should not be beating up on the police. These guys in this county is going to spend a fortune on June 19th. Nobody’s talking about who pays that bill, but it’s the residents that have to pay that bill. The safety of the cops are important, the safety of the neighborhoods important. I have been told that people who are preparing to have either 1,000 to 5,000 people, I’m concerned, I’m two blocks away, I’ve been told that the cops are going to pick up everything that can be moved, and I think that what we need to do is bring everybody together, not possibly for the 19th, but I think we have to have some site down the road when we really take the fire out of this. Because there were two other people on the council that should have stood up when you guys were called racist publicly, and that’s wrong. And I’m sorry I didn’t come forward before now, but I’ve been so upset about the fact that the lawsuit’s been filed, which does not bring people together. And if I were sitting up there, I would have made a motion and said, “I’m sorry, I’m rescinding the permit for the 19th since the lawsuit was filed, but I know you can’t do that.” That’s all I have to say. God bless you all, but I hope that we all get through this.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Your compliments, I appreciate it. Next is Paul Callahan.
Members of the council, Mr. Stanton, I think you know me, I’m Paul Callahan. I’m a veteran, I was a former Marine Corps officer, and I presently live in trapped Maryland. I’d like to say that history records that one of the most overt acts of the federal government’s abuse of power against Maryland civilians during the U.S. Civil War was the beating and imprisonment of Talbot County’s Judge Richard Bennet Carmichael. During this event, 125 federal troops surrounded Talbot’s courthouse, this very courthouse we’re in today, beat Judge Carmichael in his own courtroom, then imprisoned him without charges or trial. The only crime the judge committed was to uphold the Constitution of the United States. Judge Carmichael held that the imprisonment and executions of civilians by the federal military was unconstitutional, and he was correct. In 1866, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that these actions by the federal forces were a direct violation of the U.S. Constitution. Dixon J. Preston, a New Yorker who wrote Talbot County A History in the early 1980s, stated that the Carmichael incident was so shocking that it focused the attention of the nation on Easton and polarized public opinion in Talbot County. Preston went on to state that even the staunchest Union supporters revolted by the spectacle of a judge being beaten and arrested in his own court, and that Judge Carmichael Fair has been called the most important, single, non-military event of the war in Maryland, and it certainly was the most dramatic event in turning Talbot public opinion against the Union. I have been part of a research group that has been diligent researching the enlistment records of the Talbot Boys. Of the 84 men on our memorial, we have uncovered the enlistment records of 72 of these men. This accounts for nearly 86% of the Talbot Boys. Of these, over 54% joined the Confederacy within a five-month period after the beating of Judge Carmichael, which occurred on 27 May 1862, well over a year after commencement of the Civil War. The monthly enlistment rate during that five-month period was 450% greater than the enlistment rate prior to the beating of Judge Carmichael. Equally important is how the enlistments of Talbot Countyans dropped precipitously once Mr. Lincoln announced the Emancipation Proclamation. With the Emancipation Proclamation issued on January 1st, 1863, the Union’s war objective then included freeing the slaves in the rebellious states. After the announcement of the Emancipation Proclamation, Talbot’s Confederate enlistments dropped to less than 2% of that of the post-Carmichael enlistment period. This steep drop in enlistments after the Emancipation Proclamation supports that Talbot Countyans were not motivated to fight for the cause of slavery. This historical research has never been accomplished by any historian before, and is a product of hundreds of volunteer hours by our citizens to uncover the truth behind the Talbot Boys. This data is both historically and statistically significant, and reveals to us by our Talbot ancestors’ own deliberate actions their motivations to fight against the Union, which was the abusive actions of the federal government against Maryland and her citizens. With this overwhelming historical evidence, it would be all too logical for all of us to accept and embrace our actual history and join together to construct a unity memorial that would recognize all Talbot Countyans that fought in the U.S. Civil War, to include the nearly 700 of our Talbot Countyans of African descent that fought for the Union.
Could you wrap that up, Mr. Callahan?
Yes, I’m done. This data will be displayed, including our database, our sources, and our citations on the Preserve Talbot History website for all to review. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Gary Judy.
Gary Judy, Easton, Maryland. I don’t have any prepared remarks, because I knew that all of my friends would say probably what I’m thinking, anyway. But I just wanted to, it just breaks my heart that there seems to be a perfect solution with what Laura had come up with, to have another monument in addition to these. I’m in favor of keeping the Talbot Boys statue. Breaks my heart to think that people in this community, for some reason, want to tear us apart, and I just, I just don’t get it. It’s part of our history. We can’t change history, no matter what we think of it, and it’s not right to try to erase it, and it’s not right to dishonor our history. It just breaks my heart that people just want to tear this community apart. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Judy. I appreciate that. Next, Dr. Bill Glenn.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to talk. Bill Glass, I’m also a pastor at Mitchwood Community Church. History is just that, history. You either learn from it and avoid the mistakes that were made, or you repeat the mistakes. In fact, it’s so important that there’s a verse in the Bible that kind of speaks to this very thing. It says, “For everything that was written in the past was written to teach us, so true endurance and the encouragement of the Scriptures, we might have hope.” What I like when I read through the Bible, especially because the Bible is a theological history book, it records the things that people did right, but it also records the things that people did wrong. And you can, one person I want to pick is King David, for example. And one person, the Lord refers to King David as “a man after God’s own heart.” Then when you look at King David’s life, with the good that he did, he also had some major, major blunders. He committed adultery with a married woman, then she got pregnant, Bathsheba. To cover up that pregnancy, he tried to trick her husband to have sex with her. He didn’t do that, because he was more loyal than his own troops were, and as a result of that, he plotted his murder. But as bad as that was, his greatest error was later on in life, when he wanted to number the men in Israel, to talk about how big his army was and how prideful he was. And his job, as the commander of his army, said, “Don’t do that.” God allowed that, in fact, it was Satan’s temptation to get David to do that for his pride, to discipline Israel because of their idolatry. The result? 70,000 Israelites died in a plague from that. Our history is our history. This country has done a lot of great things, and it’s also done some things like slavery, which is terrible. No one, no matter what side you’re on, wants to justify that. The country also had to deal with it, and it did. For all those slaves that were separated from their families, the same thing happened to the slave owners when their families were divided in the Civil War, with half fighting for the Confederates, half fighting for the North. So this country did not get away with that, when you look at the death toll of the Civil War. So my prayer and prayer in all this is, when you come into a courthouse, you have a statue of Frederick Douglass, and then you have this statue. If you take one of those away, you destroy the impact of the other one. We need to understand that history in doing that. And I want to end with someone who understood this, and that was Joseph, was the young, well, second youngest son of Jacob, who was sold to slavery by his brothers. And his attitude was that, thank you, “What men meant for evil, God meant for good, to preserve many people alive.” Look how far we’ve come since that Civil War in doing that. We can either learn from that, if you try to cover it up, I’m afraid we may go backwards and repeat it. So, thank you again for that time.
Thank you, Dr. Glass. Thank you. Cindy Steedman.
Oh, no. I was with the, I gave my time to Clive.
Is it Fran Ewing? Fran B. Ewing?
Fran Ewing? Fran Ewing?
Michelle.
No, that’s next.
Okay.
Of Cordova?
What, this is Ewing?
No, no, no.
Oh.
The Fran, the Fran Ewing.
Is there a Fran Ewing?
Fran B. Ewing of Chautauqua.
Fran B. Ewing?
I know a lot of Ewings, and I don’t know a Fran Ewing.
Okay, okay. We’re going to take, we’re going to take that.
Michelle Ewing?
Michelle. Okay, there we go.
I know this one.
You know.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Ewing, and I represent the Midshore League of Republican Women. I would like to read a statement that was included on a wreath placed at the Talbot Boys Monument this past Memorial Day. “To the Talbot Boys, Hundreds of troops from Talbot County fought in the Civil War from 1861 to 1865. Some wore blue, some wore gray. Many returned home, many did not. They were white, they were black, they were all Talbot Boys. In 1913, local Civil War veterans united to honor the 50th anniversary of the Battle of Gettysburg. Talbot Countyans fought against each other in the Battle of Gettysburg at Culp’s Hill in 1863. It is an important part of our local history. In remembrance during this time period, it was agreed to place two monuments on the Talbot courthouse lawn, one Union, one Confederate. Their intentions were published in several newspaper articles between 1913 and 1916. This Memorial Day, we ask all of Talbot County to unite and honor their intentions. This was sacred to them, blue and gray, united. Let us build up, not tear down, our monument. We urge the Talbot County Council to renew its pledge to support the construction of a Union soldier monument to complete the vision of our county commissioners from over 100 years ago. Thank you.”
Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate it. Walt Johnson? Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. My name’s Walt Johnson. Some 22 years ago, my wife and I moved to Talbot County, and one of the reasons we made Talbot County our home was the county’s sense of community, simply love your neighbor. I grew up in New Orleans. A few years ago, a crane removed a 16-foot bronze statue of General Robert E. Lee that was perched on a pedestal some 60 feet above St. Charles Avenue in New Orleans. The monument was in a vital location where 75% of traffic heading downtown passed daily. Everyone identified it as the Robert E. Lee Circle. This is, in today’s city, 67% African-American. Mayor Mitch Landrus made a decision to remove the monument, and that decision started with a conversation with an old friend, renowned jazz musician and New Orleans native, Wynton Marsalis. Two men’s making a tremendous change because it was the right thing to do. Years ago, I remember New Orleans Mayor Moon Landreau, Mitch’s father, sat in my newspaper office in Morgan City and asked our support for key legislation essential for New Orleans because it’s the right thing to do. Mitch was probably eight years old then, his sister Mary maybe nine or 10. She was the oldest of the nine. She served six terms in the Senate, and later as a state treasurer. The first contractor Mitch asked to move the monument had to back out because of threats on his life. Another contractor made the move, unannounced and in the middle of the night, because it was the thing to do. Talbot County needs to move the monument because it’s the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate your words. Next is Dirk Bartlett.
At the sound-
At the sound of the click, leave your message. Right. It's nice to be amongst friends and it's great to see Angela. And my lucky stars have aligned that I could be here for one of her last meetings. And I just want to say how warm and friendly it is to be back amongst friends. And welcome back to in-public hearings. So congratulations. And thank you for looking after the citizens of Talbot County. I do feel compelled to testify on the recent lawsuit filed by Richard Potter, the NAACP, the ACLU, Attorney Keesha Petticolas, and the Washington Law Firm of Crowell and Morling LLP, filed in District Court in Baltimore. The federal court challenge, quote, "is challenging as racist and illegal the Talbot County's placement and retention of the Confederate monument on the grounds of the Talbot County Courthouse in Easton," end quote. I just want you all to remember, some of you were there and some of you were not, to our meeting with the Talbot County NAACP in the fall of 2015. And anyone can search that meeting and see the entire meeting on video if you simply Google Talbot County, NAACP, 2015. It pops right up. You can watch the entire meeting from start to finish. You will recall that Richard Potter, representing the NAACP and the other board members that were there at the time, recommended, number one, that we remove the Talbot Boys statue, and number two, form a committee to build a new joint Union and Confederate monument of some kind and erect the new monument on the courthouse lawn. At the time, you will see in that video that I questioned the NAACP proposal. And anyone can easily see this exchange on video. My question had to do with why you would propose tearing down one Confederate statue and then add a Confederate component on the new statue. Had we done what they were asking us to do in 2015, we would now probably be tearing down that statue. The reason I say this is I think the community needs to come together, and we do need a unity statue. On my last few months on the Talbot County Council, a fellow by the name of Philip Merrill came forward with an idea. He had a sketch of a, of a Union soldier standing next to the Talbot Boy. What he proposed to do was rotate the Talbot Boy 90 degrees so it's facing the Frederick Douglass statue, and to add a Union soldier next to the Talbot Boy with the American flag wrapping around behind, concealing the Confederate flag. This was a great idea. It's still a great idea, and it would put Easton on the map. You're faced with a federal lawsuit. When I was on the council, we were faced with the same thing. A federal lawsuit from a group saying that we had made a constitutional taking of their property. We prevailed in that lawsuit. So all I'm saying to you is, look at these issues carefully. Show your attorneys that meeting we had. Tell the truth about what was said in 2015. And defend the citizens of Talbot County against this lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett, appreciate it.
And David Montgomery?
Thank you, I'm David Montgomery. I live here in Easton. I have lived here part-time for 25 years and full-time for 10. I chose Talbot County because I liked what I found here back then and still do. I want what I find, what I found in Talbot County to be preserved. I didn't arrive to get a water view and then change everything else into a replica of a liberal suburb. So I'd just like to sum up the goals of preserving Talbot history because I'm also part of that organization. We oppose tearing down, we support building up. We know that Union and Confederate veterans came together at a great reunion 50 years after they fought at Gettysburg. They faced each other there. Those soldiers returned from the Union with a joint vision to create two memorials to commemorate their service in blue and in gray. Only one was built, for whatever reason. That has been a local and unique memorial for the last 105, 8-plus years. We want to start there and make the memorial complete and more inclusive. Those men fought each other, and then they came home and lived together for 50 years peacefully, becoming friends again. They put all the resentment behind them. They were the ones that suffered, and we should stop trying to refight the Civil War. We can improve on their vision, and we can make the memorial more inclusive by adding specific recognition of the U.S. colored troops from our county, which is another unique story. It makes this into something else that, together with interpretive materials, should be a, another outstanding destination for people to come to see in Talbot County. If Franklin, Tennessee can do it, we can do, too. And finally, I'd like to reiterate Dirk's point. Whatever the county and its people decide to do here, that decision belongs only to us. There is no justification. And I, my lawyer friends can find no example of a federal court ordering a local government to remove a secular monument of any kind. Ten Commandments, that's different, but this is not, this is not an issue of church and state. Please stand up to this new intrusion of heavy-handed outside forces, just like Judge Carpenter did in 1863. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Chad Hill?
Good evening, Council. Nice to be with you in person tonight. Nice to see you all. Sir Isaac Newton is credited with a great quote. The quote is, "Truth is ever to be found in simplicity and not in the multiplicity and confusion of things." When I listen to the arguments for the statue to remain, I get lost in the multiplicity and confusion and complexity of the argument. Here's a simple statement for you. The Confederate flag squarely represents efforts to perpetuate slavery and white supremacism. To argue that the Talbot Boys statue is not racist is as absurd as arguing that the Tidewater Inn is not made of bricks. Charleston, South Carolina, New Orleans, Louisiana, Richmond, Virginia. Somehow, these communities somehow have been able to do what we have not. I just want to echo Mr. Pack's very profound comments from two weeks ago. I've never met Mr. Pack in my life. I don't think I've ever been in the same room as him. But I thought it was so profound and so accurate what he said. It's such a shame that this council's legacy is going to be what it is. You all are such hardworking, good people. I don't know any of you that well. Some of you, not at all. But you strike me as, I know your love for this county. It's apparent. And I see how hard you work, and I believe it. But this county is not riled up about public, you know, sewer and water right now. We're here to talk about something else. And I think it's unfortunate that that's going to be the legacy, I think, in my opinion, of this council. This reckoning, this moment, it's not a problem. It's not unfortunate. It's beautiful. It's taken us 100 years to have this conversation. It's an opportunity. It's not a problem. It's an opportunity. It is your opportunity. Now is not a moment to be frozen. It is an opportunity to raise our standard, to step up, to come together and be better for it. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
These are all the names that I have signed up in advance.
That's, that's all the names we have right now, so I will ask the first row, second row, third, fourth. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Hi.
How you doing? Just tell us who you are.
My name is Sarah Sayer. I live in Claiborne, Maryland. And I, Talbot has a tremendous amount of history. Lots of history here, lots of great history. I love Talbot County. First came here in 1976, bought a home in 1985. Wasn't able to live here full-time till I retired from work, but I love this place tremendously. Talbot has a lot of history. We haven't talked about some of the history here. The Ark and the Dove came in the early 1600s or something, started in Maryland, and I don't know exactly, I apologize. I don't know when Talbot County began. But my guess is that for at least half the time since Talbot County was founded, many of the residents of Talbot County were enslaved. They worked not as Mr. Seth, who set up the Talbot Boys statue, not as he said, sort of, it was Uncle Remus and, you know, Grandma and Uncle. It was slavery with cruelty, with the worst thing, not owning yourself. And so when the Talbot Boys statue was put there, it was part of a trend for Jim Crow era. The, as I'll say, the blacks were getting uppity. And it was time, after Reconstruction, to remind the former slaves and the descendants of slaves that they weren't, didn't make the grade. They were second-class citizens. And unfortunately, I believe that it was placed at that time when other statues were made that have been removed in other areas for this reason. And for the nearly 5,000 descendants of slaves in Talbot County, to walk through the wonderful garden in front of this building, or worse, to be going into court for, you know, either pro or con, whatever, or especially worst, in an orange jumpsuit or whatever color is used here, fortunately, I don't know. But to see that statue with names, and one of those names might be someone who owned your great-grandfather. Now what, or his friend, or one of your further relatives. What effect does that have on the person entering this building? Someone who is descended from those, from the slaves who were such a population here. What is the effect on that? And there was a letter to the editor in The Star where a guy said, "That's not worth," in the lawsuit, he said.
Let's get, let's get right to wrap it up.
I'm sorry?
Let's get right to wrap this up, okay?
Oh, yeah. Anyway, he said, "That's not a valid argument." Well, laws, what I mean to say, and I'm sorry, I'm very nervous.
That's okay, don't be nervous.
The good thing to do would be to remove the statue. Build something greater. Build one thing that's greater. One thing would do it, but move the statue off the lawn of the courthouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else on the, on the third row? Okay, the fourth row? In the back? Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Holly. I live outside of Easton. I've addressed this council before by email and by internet, the last council meeting, so I'm not going to go over what I said before. Hopefully, you've heard it. I, I'm not going to give any dissertations and rebuttal of the dissertations you've heard about why we should preserve the history as described by the people that described it. I'm not going to give you a sermon about why keeping the statue is wrong. I'm just going to say to you that it seems to me fairly self-evident, two generations after the end of the Civil War, an insurrection against the country that we all love, that we have people who still believe, in some fashion, maybe without knowing it, that one race of men somehow has a right to rule the lives of another race of men. Is that right or wrong? It's fairly self-evident to me. The other question I ask myself today is, if I were a black man and I walked into this courthouse, would I feel okay? Not today. Maybe when I was a kid, when I had the education I had, in the high schools that I had. I would have walked and not even thought about it because it wasn't something that I worried about. I, I just generally worried about being alive. That's not for me to say. All I know is that when I answer the question, "Would I like to be born black in this country today?", I say no. So because of that, it seems to me self-evident. The Confederacy was representative of something wrong. It needs to get out of the courthouse yard in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holly, appreciate it. Okay, on the right-hand side of the first row, I think you guys talked the second row, okay?
Kathy Lebel again.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, and I've sent you all an email way back when, so I'm going to be briefed today. To me, it, it's time is, it's time to find a more appropriate place for that statue. It doesn't belong on our courthouse. It's inappropriate in 2021. And I'm not talking about what happened 100 and 150 years ago. I'm only concerned about today. And it really is, it shouldn't be there. And you all, as a council, have very important county matters to attend to. And all of our county residents need to believe that they're represented and that they're being treated equally by you. And that's part of my concern with why the statue needs to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pam, come on up.
I wasn't planning on speaking this evening.
No problem. Take your time.
But I am compelled. I appreciate Chad Hill's.
Well, first of all, could you tell us who you are?
Yes, I'm Kelly Moran, and I live in Easton.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moran.
I agree with Mr. Hill's comments that there's so much important history and significant history around the statue, around the Talbot Boys, around the Civil War, all the events leading up to why the monument was placed on the Talbot Courthouse lawn. For me, the bottom line is, there is a Confederate flag that does represent the flag of the Confederate soldiers who fought to perpetuate slavery. To have that symbol on the courthouse lawn is wrong. It is injustice. And we do not ask that the monument be torn down. We ask that the monument be moved. It deserves a place in history, in a museum. It is unfortunate that we cannot find anybody who is willing to take it, although there has been money raised to move it. So I would just like to simply say, the So I would just like to simply say, the Confederate flag that is present on the courthouse lawn is a symbol of the perpetuation of slavery, a cause that many people died to defeat and does not belong here.
Thank you, Ms. Moran. Appreciate it. Anybody else on the second row? Okay, how about the third row? Anybody on the third row? Anybody on the fourth row?
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Richard Potter. I'm the president of the Talbot County branch of the NAACP. Tonight, I'm here to speak once again on the issue that has been plaguing our county since 2015, and that is that Confederate monument that sits on our courthouse lawn. Today, I received an article from The Washington Post where your counterparts in Charlottesville, Virginia, made the right choice to remove that monument that they have in Charlottesville. And I urge you to do the same, to make the right choice, to do what's respectful, do what's in the best spirit of bringing people together, and that's to remove that monument on the courthouse lawn. That's a symbolism of hate, bigotry, and demoralizing to a group of individuals. That is not the place for a monument such as that that sits on the lawn of justice. That's a terrible contrast there, where people should go to be able to receive a fair and just trial and not have to worry about monuments that says if you are a black individual, you belong in chains and bondage. So I urge you to do the right thing, the right time. To do the right thing is now. It always has been now, and you, again, have the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter.
Thank you.
Anybody on the fourth row? Okay, how about the last row?
It's kind of nice to see everybody in person and not on a Zoom call.
Yeah, there you go.
President Callahan, members of the council, I'm Stephen Hunter, a lifelong resident of Talbot County, and tonight, I'm representing a group, the Union Talbot Boys. To begin, I have some news to share this evening that our group is very proud of. Today, we received our first donation of $10,000 to begin a project that has been discussed by many, including this council, the Talbot NAACP, and others. It is a project that has never been brought to life, and we intend to change that. We are the group, the Union Talbot Boys, who are going to honor the intent of the Talbot County veterans who came long before us. Their intent, the remaining Civil War veterans of Talbot County who are still alive some 105-plus years ago, was to place two monuments on the courthouse lawn in honor of those who served, one Confederate, one Union. How do we know their intent, which is an important word? It is well documented in articles from the time period that ran in our local newspaper. You can research them for yourselves. They're out there. I think the group that's here tonight in blue has a whole website dedicated to this stuff. These articles all make it very clear. After many years, we, the Union Talbot Boys, think we are on the path to complete a Union monument to fully represent our Talbot County history of the Civil War. While there are 18 United States colored troops honored in Unionville who served the Union Army, there are USCT soldiers from Talbot County who have never been recognized. There are more. We, the Union Talbot Boys, intend to change that. For those who are just discovering parts of our local history, and as a reminder to everyone who is more familiar, there were men from Talbot County in the Civil War who wore blue, there were men who wore gray, there were white soldiers, there were black soldiers. What matters the most is that every one of them was a Talbot Boy. Our group, the Union Talbot Boys, wants all of our citizens to know that we have an opportunity in Talbot County that is very unique. It is the opportunity to unite and share with the world our incredible story. Our history is unlike any other in the United States when it comes to this time period. It is a deep history that can and should be shared over and over again. From a selfish Talbot Countyan standpoint of view, it's a goldmine waiting to happen for our county. More importantly, we have an opportunity to show how a community can overcome division and create good for all of our citizens. Our group, the Union Talbot Boys, will be releasing more information in the near future and ultimately be coming back to you, the council, with more details. In closing, we envision a monument that is long overdue, the Union Talbot Boys, which will honor those who have not been represented on the courthouse lawn for over 100 years. It was the intent of our ancestors to do this, and it is our intent now. It has been talked about, and it's time to make it happen. Today's $10,000 donation is a very generous gesture to help us move forward in continuing to tell our history, not destroy it. We are extremely grateful for it. Members of the council, I thank you for your time this evening, and I thank you for your service to our county. I know it's been an extremely difficult time period, and I really do appreciate all of you. We will be back, and to our community, we will be releasing more information on how you can make a donation if you wish to do so. There is more good to come, a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else have, anybody else have any final thoughts or anything like that? Okay. All right, council. First of all, I would like to commend the audience for being very respectful, and I really appreciate you making our job up here a little bit easier tonight, and I really truly thank you. And this is what a community is about, listening to each other and being very respectful. And that's what's going to make all this come together here at the end. We will make this, we will make this, the right word. This is a start, okay? This is what it takes, doing this together. This is our first time back together, and it's been great. It's been very respectful, and I appreciate everybody's kind words and being respectful to the council. So let's move on to council comments. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. First, it's a delight to be back in this room, in person, with my council colleagues, with the staff, and most importantly, with the members of the public. Thanks in particular to all of you who have been vaccinated to make this possible, and words of encouragement to any of those who have not had that opportunity yet. Thanks to all who came out tonight to speak to us on the full variety of issues that we've heard, that we've heard tonight. This public engagement is vital to the health of our democracy. I hear you, all of you. Second, I want to graduate, congratulate the graduating seniors, their parents and families, and the teachers and staff who had their ceremony last night at Easton High School, where I was in attendance with Mr. Callahan and Mr. Pack, and tonight at St. Michael's High School, where Mr. Pack is representing the council, hence his absence tonight. This graduating class faced adversity broadly across the whole class. No one was spared the impact of the pandemic. And with adversity comes endurance. And with endurance, we build character. And with character, we have better citizens. At Easton, I learned we graduated 270 students. Only two failed to graduate, and students are not dropping out, not only, not like they did when I was in high school. And those two will be helped along until they meet the state and district graduation requirements. This is an extraordinary achievement for the school, making sure that nobody, that no one gets left behind. I can't tell you how important that is and what a positive sign for our society that is, that we all count. Congratulations to the seniors, and congratulations as well to the faculty and staff of our school for a job well done.
Director, your time, words, Mr. Vice President. Appreciate it. Ms. President.
Sure. Well, I think we're all very, very grateful to be back in here. It has been just about a year, and I am thrilled to see so many faces because I think that's what was missing. And will hopefully bring us all back together is to see each other on the street and to smile at one another and to start giving hugs again. I think it's going to make all the difference in the world. People are very divided, but it didn't help what was going on in 2020 when we couldn't be together and have real conversations. So I do appreciate that tonight. It was wonderful. And, you know, to have all of the, you know, the staff here, the new faces and the faces that are leaving, let me see your face, dear, the faces that are leaving. So also, congratulations to the graduating class. But I also want to mention that we also lost someone else very beloved. And sometimes he was quirky, and sometimes people loved him, and sometimes people hated him. But the passing of our cartoonist and editorialist, Rick Collinger, is deeply sad. He certainly took his jabs at a lot of political things and even a few times at the council, though it's been a while, and I will say, the last cartoon he drew of all of us was actually when Mr. Bartlet was still on the council, and it was a construction site in the library, I think, and Mr. Pack was in it saying, "Cut to here." And he drew me with this real big hair and a teeny-tiny hat, you know, and it's just like, not at all a likeness. But we will miss him dearly and his sense of humor, and I don't think there's anybody like him, so I just want everybody to take a moment to remember him and, you know, any other, and his family and his little dog he said he left behind. But again, it's wonderful to be back here. Thank you for coming out, and we hope we see you again.
Thank you, Ms. President.
So the last council comments I made were what I learned about sewer. For those who don't realize or know, lots of them are failing throughout the county, especially when I try to put an offer on a house, it seems like it's guaranteed that septic's going to fail. This time, I learned about internet. And the one thing that I hate is when you see a company get bashed online for something that's completely out of their control. I was having, I've been spoiled for way too long, living off of Eastern Utilities, having excellent internet. That is just unbelievable. And now I've had to switch to a cell phone tower, which I thought I was a problem using technology, and it turned out that it was a protected bird has made a nest on that tower. And so that company is now not able to put out cellphone signal, which is what a lot of people in Cordova trap Y-mills use for internet. And they had no idea that it was this bird doing that. And to compound that, think about students in school when something horrible happens. A student falls and breaks his arm. It doesn't have to be a shooting. It could be something very innocent that happens all the time. You'd want that teacher to pick up her cell phone and call that parent, right? They can't do that in Cordova. You cannot get a cellphone call out in the school of Cordova or in the fire department there. It's something that has been a thorn in my side for a long time. I'm going to continue bringing it up because that's a matter of a very significant safety issue in my concern, something that I think that this council can address and handle. But I just ask, as you saw the broadband money that we're working with, what we're trying to do for the community, but these are small cellphone companies that are trying to put the internet out that are just a Band-Aid through this time. So I just ask, maybe we could all be a little bit more civil online when we see or have a problem and not personally feel attacked that that company shut down your internet. It's happening to your neighbor as well, and maybe there's a bald eagle making a nest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devilio. So I'm going to end this with, I'm very happy with this community, the way you guys really put on a class act here, and I really, really appreciate it. When you look down this agenda tonight, Mr. Devilio said we're dealing with broadband, fixing up schools, we're hiring staff that's, you know, just trying to do the right thing for the community. And we're blessed to have a council like this that is working hard for you guys. We're all not going to agree on things. We're not. That's what makes it special. That's what makes us in this room work together on a solution. I'm very, very proud of staff helping us out for the last couple of weeks. You guys were in trenches for months and months and months and months, getting us straightened. And I want to thank you for all that hard work. And Patrick's on board with us. He's our new acting attorney, and I can't thank you enough for all your hard work, too. You've been very quiet tonight, so that's a good thing, you know?
Give me time.
Hey, when he's quiet, that means we're doing it right.
I know it. That's exactly right. Exactly right. So I want to thank you for all that. And also, you know, these guys are hanging out with us, the men in the blue over here, and we really appreciate everything you've done to make things work for us and make this community feel safe, okay? So we back you, we have your back, and we're always going to be there for you, okay? Not only is it important that you're there for us, we've got to be there for you, too, okay? And I appreciate that. So that being said, we ended on a good note. Mr. Vice President, you want to go ahead and wrap things up for us?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 22nd, beginning at 6:00 PM. The council will be convening an open session at 4:30 PM and immediately adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moves.
Second.
Madam Secretary.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Mr. Devilio.
Aye.
Mr. Lusher.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Thanks a lot. Have a great evening.